Good morning. My name is Don Michaelman, and I want to welcome you to the April 25th, 2020, meeting of the City of Prescott's Planning and Zoning Commission. Would like to welcome Mayor Good and Councilmember Gamboge joining us today on this. I will have the members of the commission introduce themselves, and Susan just really wanted to be first this morning to start off. Susan?
Good morning. My name is Susan Graham. And that's the one we had here for a minute. Remember to push the button so we can hear you. Thank you.
Good morning. My name is James Whiting. Thanks for coming.
Good morning. I'm Tom Hutchison. Nice to see you all.
Good morning, Tom Riley.
Good morning, Jim Kloszuski.
Good morning, Tom Davis.
This is an open public hearing and is being videotaped by the city. The proceedings are being televised by representatives of the public media, the public, local cable, and/or radio stations, and may also be rebroadcast. The number of commission members present is seven. It requires a majority vote of those present to pass a motion. Members of the public when called upon are required to state their name and address for the record so that we may know who is speaking and be able to contact them later date if necessary. If you could check your cell phones and make sure they're off or on mute, would appreciate it there. First item, we do not have minutes to review at this meeting. The next meeting, we're going to have two sets of minutes to review. First item on the agenda is REZ 24-001, a request for rezoning from SF 18, Single Family, to BG Business General, allowing for a 36-unit RV park on a 2.14-acre parcel. Location is APN 115-06-11E, 1646 Iron Springs Road. Property owner KL HB LLC. Applicant is Leah Beck. Tammy?
Thank you. Good morning, Chairman, members of the commission. First, I apologize. My allergies are acting up pretty bad right now, so if I get a little, sound a little congested, that's why. I'm not sick. Oh. Okay, the request before you is a zoning map change. The property is approximately 2.14 acres. The current zoning is single-family, 18-density. The proposed zoning is Business General, BG, and this is to allow for a 36-unit RV park and amenities which include an office, two full bathrooms, and laundry. Here's the zoning map to show you. This is kind of an, it was, it was an outlier when the rest of the area was rezoned. As you can see, we have multifamily to the west and to the north. To the west, we have apartments. To the north, we have the school. And then to the east, we have Business General, which is going to be similar to the zoning being requested of BG. And then we have other multifamily and commercial in this area. It is located off of Iron Springs Road, which is a, it's not a designated commercial corridor, but we do see mostly commercial development along Iron Springs Road. The subject property is vacant. There's been no improvements on the property at this time. Here's the proposed site plan. It is very preliminary. It's for the rezoning request, that if the rezoning is approved, they will have to do engineered plans and show they meet all the criteria per the Land Development Code for the size of the RV spaces and for landscaping and such. City staff from various departments have reviewed the conceptual project and found it appears to meet the city code requirements. There are preliminary determinations based on, upon limited information available at this time due to it is a preliminary site plan just for the rezoning. If the rezoning is approved, much more detailed plans will be required and a more detailed examination by staff will occur at that time. So compatibility, to the west, we do have apartments; to the east, commercial offices; and to the south, on the other side of Iron Springs Road, we have vacant land, and we also have other mobile home and RV parks that are pre-existing. The general plan does show this for a commercial area. It is designated by the 2015 general plan as commercial, so that's for, allows for commercial-type uses such as allowed in Business General and Business Regional, which an RV park is first allowed in the Business General zoning district. Recommended action is to move to recommend approval of rezoning or not to, from multifamily medium to Business Generals in substantial performance with the site plan. And that concludes my presentation, and I'm free to answer any questions. In regards to the letters of opposition you had this morning, staff has not been able to look at those, or review them, or analyze them, so I can't answer any questions about the letters of opposition that you got this morning.
Thank you, Tammy. Any questions from staff? Tom?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Tammy, if this does get zoned, if this, BG zoning, is there a density that's associated with that for the RV spots?
It'll be then, per the site plan, for what's proposed on the site plan. So as they move forward, it'd have to be in substantial performance with the approved site plan and a number of units. But in the zoning code, there's not a density. It just has to meet certain criteria.
Would you be able to outline some of that criteria for us?
Not at this second, no, because we were just looking at this for a rezone to make sure it's compatible, the zoning requested is compatible with the surrounding area. We would look at all that information when we get the engineering permits.
Thank you.
Other questions, staff? Is the applicant here? Could you come up, please?
Right there.
Would you like to make an opening comment? You don't have to.
I didn't prepare a speech. Good morning, though. Nice to meet you all face-to-face. We see each other online. My name's Leah. This is Kevin. We grew up here in Chino Valley, and we've been looking for a project.
Just a little closer.
More? Okay. Is that better?
A little closer.
It's better? Good. Is that okay? Okay, thank you. Sorry. My name is Leah. This is Kevin. We grew up here in Chino Valley, and since the eighties, and so we've lived here in Arizona our whole lives. And we've been looking for a project that we could have a small business in the area. I'm a nurse down the street at YRC. I grew, went to Yavapai College and NAU. I worked in Phoenix for some time, and I moved back. And we were excited when we found this parcel. We were surprised it was still there and available, just needed the rezone for other options. I know in the PAC meeting that we had, too, they said it would be odd to make that a single-family home, too, because of all the surrounding commercial. Our goal is not to bring in some kind of an industrial area. We love all the trees in that space. We love that you can see thumbbute clearly. We love that even on the other side of Iron Springs, there's all that commercial industrial kind of buildings that are actually lower than our parcel, so you can still have a view across. We know that there are really pretty properties up on the hill, which I think there's residents here today. You know, those acre properties are really nice on top of the mountain there. Then the school encumbers all that area right behind us. So we wanted to incorporate it to be something that's fun to go to. We like quiet and peaceful, too, so we want it to blend in with the area and not be some kind of loud, obnoxious thing that, you know, you always worry about when you live nearby, something, dogs barking, parties, loud music, things like that. We want it to be just a nice place for people to either have long-term rental space with their RV park, which I know is needed, especially for retirees, or students, or anyone that needs low-budget housing, and/or just obviously the local traveler. The rodeo grounds is close by. We've got the mountain bike race this weekend, all those fun events, and we just want to participate in all of that and have a nice community area space to have for people to come and enjoy Prescott and be close to downtown. Did you want to say anything?
No, I think I'm good. Like you said.
Usually at this time, we allow the commission members to ask questions of you, just to let you know. That's the standard procedure here, okay?
Sure.
Any questions with applicant? Tom?
Yeah, Tom Hutchison. Lee, can you tell me about the stay limit? Are you going to restrict how long people can stay at this RV park if it were approved?
We have discussed different options. We might do a month-to-month, considering they could stay longer. That way, it, I think eliminates issues if there's a tenant, you know, if they get in a year lease and we have issues, you know, that can be a problem. So we thought maybe a month-to-month lease would be useful at that time, or, you know, overnight stays, weekends, things like that. So that's what we're considering at this time.
So where I'm headed with that is, this could very well be, become a permanent resident or semi-permanent residence for some people.
It could, yeah, or seasonal travelers, things like that.
Mm-hmm.
But it would be within the RV park guidelines.
Thank you.
Other commission members? Tom?
Yeah. Hi, welcome back.
Hi.
Couple of questions. With the rezoning, there's always some issues, some questions that come up with the things. Rezoning it just to Business General is one thing. You've given us some information as to what the use would be, and I guess the question comes up now is maybe fleshing out a little bit more about some of the issues that could arise on this, like number one, how did you come up with the density on this?
During the PAC meeting, they gave us some minimum requirements for each space. They wanted at least a 30-foot-wide space to allow for fire safety, and so we originally designed it, we wanted longer spots so people wouldn't have to unhook and things like that, and made them 20 feet wide, but we reconfigured the drawing to be 30 feet wide. And there, the spots are, are pretty large, considering some places don't have very large spots when we went and looked at all the other RV parks in the city and local areas in the state. So some of the spots you can see are up to 65 feet long. So given the size of the spaces, even the 30, when you were talking about density, the 36 lot area, the spaces are quite large. You know, when we were walking them out in real time and putting cones out, you know, a two-car garage is 20 feet wide, so each of them are three-car garage width, more or less to give a visual, and then you've got a depth of a, a minimum of 40 feet, up to 60-plus feet. Most of them are 50 feet. I think I put a little key on the side. There's some dark blue that are the 60-foot-plus. The 50-foot-plus are like a dark pink, light pink or 40-foot-plus. So that looks like there's one, two, three, four, five. Five 60-foot-plus, most of them are the 50-foot-plus, and then a few on the side with the 40-foot-plus.
Okay, thank you.
Does that answer your question?
Yes, it did.
So that's how we came up with the number, and just trying to make it comfortable for everyone, make it an angle so it's easy to back in and out. We originally had an entrance and an exit, and they pointed out that that could be confusing or difficult, and we know how busy Iron Springs can get during traffic times, but we made a loop, and then we also provided temporary RV parking in the front, so for check-in and things like that. So when an RV comes in, even if they accidentally pass their space, they never have to go back on Iron Springs. They can loop within the community and not have to try to get out in traffic and those kinds of things. So we felt that was a safer and more comfortable space when you're trying to drive around a trailer and a truck.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Other questions? Yep?
Actually, I have a question for staff. Based on your business plan, or your thought of your business plan being 30 days, would that be considered hospitality and would the city receive bed tax?
Yes. 30 days or less is hospitality, so, but if they're over 30 days, it may not.
Any other questions? I have one. In your information sheet that you submitted to us, you made a comment that there'd be short-term and long-term rentals available. So are you going to be owning some units yourself and renting them out, or not?
Possibly in the future. We were talking about having just a couple short-term for Airbnb-type, you know, to have something if someone didn't have a trailer. I think there's, Kevin, what is the, the place that has all the airstreams that they just put in? There's about eight or 10?
All the air.
Air, air.
Air Village?
Yeah. Air Village. So we'll have a few spaces for that, but not for long-term. That would be more of a, an overnight, you know, weekend things, things going on in the city. Otherwise, people would have to provide their own if they're going to stay longer. I guess you can always reevaluate. I know there's park models, I think, that fit into the RV park rezone, but I don't think that's necessarily our vision at this point, to have it that way. More of a short-term, possibly, like I said, seasonal, or if someone ends up there a year, I could see that, or if, if long-term, I think, like a flex option. But I think right now, our plan is not to have it all be, it might be like a half and half, you know, it's, I know there's a need, though, so I guess it's just to find out what the need is for people. But I think overall, we want to keep a nice community feel, so we would see maybe after a year, flex spaces if, you know, people stay longer or shorter. More for that, to keep the community nice and, and quiet and comfortable is our main goal.
Okay.
If that, that's our vision there. Okay.
All righty. Any other questions for the applicant? If not, thank you.
Mm-hmm. One, one other thing, I apologize. It was very difficult for us to get a water analysis study. We called trailer companies that make the trailers, and they won't even provide a general how much water they use in a day, or what they could use. We've called engineers, and a lot of times, they're kind of looking for us to give them an idea. And then also, we tried to get a generalization of parks in the nearby area, or even city, Prescott Valley, but owners don't want to give us their billing information. We got a little bit of information from the city to give us a general idea of water usage. I think the one park, though, was that Beverly Gardens?
Uh, yeah.
But they were a mix of mobile homes and RV park, so they ranged from, was it Shady Acres? 100,000 gallons a month to 300,000 gallons a month, and that was a mixed use of mobile homes. We ourselves have been staying in a fifth wheel, because we've been taking care of our older parents on their property, and we thought, you know what, let's throw a water gauge on our, on our RV, because I think the average that people were coming up with was 90 gallons a day, which we thought was a little high. Not impossible, but we thought that was a lot, so that's what was submitted.
This group doesn't look at the water. Just to let you know, that's a different body.
But just to give you a water thing, we've had ours on, and we use maybe 50, 60 gallons a week, because our water tank, our hot water tank only holds seven gallons, so you've got to take a quick shower. But obviously, there'll be laundry facilities and things like that, but we feel that the water usage will be low, and we want to use the, the native landscaping and keep it looking natural, so, just wanted to add that. Thank you, Tammy.
Okay. Thank you.
Okay. Thank you.
Are there members of the public who would like to address this? Mary Kay, you going to call them off?
Yes. Molly McGinn?
Good morning, members of Planning and Zoning, and Tammy, and everybody that's here. So I'm, my name is Molly McGinn, and I live in the adjacent community called Granite Shadows. It's, yeah, it's where all the green is there, just to the right of those green roofs. There are 45 homes in there. They were developed, they're mobile homes mostly, and some, some modular homes, and we've been there since 1972, and the community has been, is a, a really tightly-knit community with amazing neighbors, and some of my other neighbors are here. I did get a letter, but no one else in, in our area received any letter about this, so we scrambled to be able to get here and speak to you. So I have a letter from my next-door neighbor, and, that I wanted to read, and then we have one other letter from my other neighbor here. It says, "Hello, Planning and Zoning Commission. I'm writing to offer a commentary on this proposal to allow a 36-unit RV park on land currently zoned as single-family. I understand that you'll consider this issue today. I found out about this meeting this morning, and I'm a teacher at La Tierra, and I cannot attend the meeting, but please allow my concerns to enter into your consideration. I live at Granite, Granite Shadows Estates, 1640 Sky Trail, a home that overlooks and is adjacent to the property in question. I'm familiar with the serene character of the land. There is abundant wildlife activity in the area with bobcats, owls, hawks, skunks, deer, javelina, occasionally a raccoon, spoken like a teacher, for sure. This place is one of those rare Prescott oases with plenty of granite boulders to shelter our wildlife neighbors, native plants, including oak pinion, to feed them all, and an ephemeral natural drainage. The land provides a corridor to Prescott's Community Nature Center and is adjacent to Abaya Judd and Granite Mountain Middle School. I'm a lifelong Arizonian, as am I, in Prescott. My husband and I are in escrow to purchase a home at 1644 Sky Trail. The property we are purchasing is also adjacent to the property proposed for rezoning." We are, and she did not get a letter, by the way, but I sent her mine. And when we entered into our contract, the ownership and the use of the surrounding land was a significant factor in our decision to purchase, and finding out about this rezoning was a shock and, and, and a disappointment, made us really worry. I hope that you will consider the impact this decision will have on the surrounding neighborhood. We're assuming that there would be other families living there, someone who would love the neighborhood and care for its natural beauty and wild, wild neighbors. The single-family would not impact, or also, if it was multifamily with perhaps duplexes, et cetera, would not impact the quiet soundscape and would not impact the infrastructure in the way that a 36 RV unit would. I'm concerned about the inevitable trespassing on our properties. Travelers will surely be curious and want to explore and are not committed to the, the community as we are." So she made six points, six questions. Has an environmental impact study been completed? If so, where can we obtain a copy? Will the RV park be fenced in a way to show boundaries of human trespass but allow wildlife to pass? Will there be restrictions on length of stay? We know we addressed some of that. Will pets be allowed to freely access surrounding areas? Have studies been done on the impact of traffic, water, power, sewer, and law enforcement? Will there be new traffic control measures? Is it, it is challenging to enter the main thoroughfare of Iron Springs without traffic control, as the flow from Williamson Valley and Abaya Judd and Granite Mountain Middle School to and from the schools is very heavy in the mornings and the evenings. I hope your decision will, I, I hope that your decision will be to refuse this proposal, is what Mary said, or to negotiate with the owner to mitigate the impact on the neighborhood. One question is, what experience does, do the applicants have in actually building and operating an RV park? There's concern about the level of density there, and, yes, and the notification that we really felt like we weren't really notified sufficiently, so, so, questions for me?
Thank you, ma'am.
Great, thank you.
Good morning, and thank you very much. My name is Bob Maynard. I live at 1689 White Oak Circle in the Granite Shadow Estates. I live at 1689 White Oak Circle in the Granite Shadow Estates, and it is a very, very special neighborhood. When I first visited 15 years ago, my mom was living there, and I fell in love with it and said, someday, I'm going to retire to Prescott, and I'm going to try to live in Granite Shadow Estates. And I was lucky enough to be able to buy one of the older mobile homes and do a little gentrification and improvements to, we're seeing this all around that neighborhood as it grows and becomes nicer and more desirable. But the quality of the neighborhood is beyond belief. We're talking senior citizens, walking their dogs, talking. When we first moved there, we knew dogs' names before we knew people's names. It was wonderful. But I'm going to have a statement that I'm going to make for myself personally, but I'm going to start by reading a letter that one of my neighbors asked me to read this morning. It's to the members of the City of Prescott Planning Commission. My name is Susan Adams, and I've lived in Prescott for 30 years. During those 30 years, I've worked for the Yavapai County Board of Supervisors, the City of Prescott on several projects, and for two Arizona governors. Generally speaking, I am accepting of the changes I've seen over the years, even though I might be deeply impacted and saddened by them. However, in regard to the proposed RV park, I have concerns. I was surprised when I saw that it was recommended for approval because the design is antithetical to current RV park design. My concerns are as follows. Number one, RV spots per acre. When researching RV park design across America, the standard recommendation is 10 to 12 RV sites per acre. The proposed RV park is at least 10 RV spots more than recommended number. Design considerations: spacious lanes and parking. Design wide lanes and parking spots to allow guests to maneuver their RVs easily. Include parking for the tow vehicles often associated with the motorhomes. It appears that the design to the property line, it appears that the design to be property line to property line with little to no green space, as the preliminary site plan suggests, almost the entire 2.14 acres will be cemented or paved over. Local considerations, location considerations. Just a reminder, the rear of the property is adjacent to Abaya Judd Elementary School and Granite Mountain Middle School. The central Yavapai Fire Department is just one door down. Happily, there is a center lane for turning left or joining the flow of traffic, but traffic is becoming very congested at the intersection of the intersection of Iron Springs and Williamson Valley, especially when parents are trying to get their children to and from school on time. Number four, known problems with RV parks. And these are problems that are cited by RV park users, not from annoyed neighbors. Increase in water use because visitors are blissfully unaware of water conservation issues and increased sewage accumulation from days on the road. Dogs that bark constantly. Loud parties that go late into the night. Unpleasant messes that go unclear for days. And again, remember, this is not from neighbors. This is from people that have used RV parks. Obviously, these things can happen with residents as well. Nonetheless, the natural containment of behaviors that happens when you live in a community is not there because it will be gone tomorrow. It also concerns me that the owners do not live in our community. Rapid deterioration of an RV park is not uncommon. Most employees do not feel the same responsibility to the community as an owner would. I won't go deeply into the environmental effects of paving over two acres of land that has supported life. I can tell you that our insect population is very small now. We used to have thousands of beetles that came every summer, but since the apartments went into the adjacent, went in adjacent to the proposed RV park, only a handful of beetles arrive in the summer anymore. They're an important asset to the food chain. They have vanished like the bats, the foxes, the raccoons, the porcupines, the deer that used to populate the area. Please consider at least a reduction in the number of the RV sites at this location. So that was Susan's letter. My statement's fairly short. And the current zoning for this property of SF-18 is low-density residential. And it happens to be in a very unique area. And I'll explain why. That SF-18 is designed for the preservation of views, the preservation of open space, and the preservation of the native vegetation. Developing this, converting it to BG and developing an RV park, all of those items are lost. And they're lost forever. The current zoning allows five homes with minimal impact on traffic flow onto a busy street like Iron Springs. This changes significantly with 36 motor homes or RV spaces being used daily basis. And I would lastly say, if you're going to consider a zoning change to this property, why don't we think about maybe five duplexes that create workforce housing for firefighters and teachers that could walk to work? Thank you.
Thank you, sir.
No further requests.
Commission members, thoughts, discussion?
Mr. Chairman, Tom Davis. For clarification, Tammy, this is a zone change from a single family detached to a, to a business general. And the site plan process is a different process, right? A separate process that comes back to us?
No, this will be your only review of this application.
So what happens with the site plan for the RV park? How does the applicant get through this process to get the permit for that?
They'll have to, if the rezoning is approved by city council, then they apply for their engineering permits for the site.
So there's no other public review of the site plan?
Correct.
Well, it makes sense to me that there should be a zone change here. I think the zone is inconsistent with the general plan in the business commercial corridor, from what I've read. Now, I could be wrong, but I have no problem with the zone change. I do have issues with the site plan and I don't know when that input can be made.
The request to you before is a rezoning to a business general. The manifest, an RV park isn't allowed use by right without going through any other processes in the business general. And it was staff's recommendation. Since it's business general to the east, it's consistent with the area.
Okay. Thank you.
Tom?
Thank you. Question for Tammy and George. This, this seems to feel more like a zoning change to a high-density residential rather than business general. What we're really doing is putting in 36 trailers in there that people are going to live in month to month or, or longer. And that suggests that we need sidewalks for kids to go to school. We need places for dogs to do their business and on and on and on. So I'm wondering, isn't this in fact zoning to a high-density residential setting?
Well, high-density residential would be allowed in business general or multifamily high. But the request before you is for an RV park. That's what they're proposing, this applicant is proposing to put on that property. The zoning required for that is business general. So we're bringing forward what's being requested by the applicant.
The other question I have, the thought that I had was the need for a potential traffic study.
So I have the comments from the traffic engineer right here. This is approval of the rezoned request only. No review of the site plan or other traffic elements provided was completed. This will occur during the civil plan submittal. They have to do a traffic study when they do their, their engineering permits and as well as all their other studies.
Susan?
That's Susan Graham. I'm also a little bit concerned about the density. As a somewhat newbie person in terms of hauling a trailer and backing a trailer, some of the sites concern me in terms of the space and the maneuverability, especially if you have a larger rig. The other thing that concerns me is that RV parks can very quickly deteriorate into major ice cores. And that would be a concern to me as well.
Jim Kloszuski. My concerns are several. One is, we really don't know about water use until it becomes a reality. And I know that we're having issues with our water, as we do everywhere else in the state. Prescott has not, is not a complete yield replacement water situation annually. We only replace about 75% of the water that's used. I'm concerned about transient traffic if we're talking about minimum stays of 30 days. I'm also concerned about the traffic and I'm not sure it's highest and best use for what we could do based on what the city really needs.
Any other comments? Tom?
Yeah, I have a question for our, our attorney. Sorry to wake you up, Matt. I've been following it closely.
I do have a question for you. Given, when we rezone something, when we look at a rezoning, what are the parameters that we are legally bound by or not bound by in order to be able to make a zoning decision?
So according to your Land Development Code, Section 9.15.5, the issues for consideration are five, but they include, but not limited to those five things. So you can consider other things. But I'll just read them to you. First is consistency or lack thereof with the general plan and other adopted plans. Compatibility with the present zoning and conforming uses of nearby property and with the character of the neighborhood. And that's often where we get the most public concern. The suitability of the subject property for uses permitted by the proposed zoning district. Suitability of the subject property for uses permitted by the existing district. And, as you've been discussing a little bit, availability of sewer, water, and stormwater facilities.
Thank you.
A follow-up question to that. When zoning applications are submitted for review, are they often associated, have a site plan with them for the proposed use and how that's going to be laid out?
Yes, it's usually a preliminary site plan based on what they feel can fit on the property. And then we, it gets vetted out more when they submit their civil plans. Or a plat map if it was going to be plaid. But this is, this is the only review of this application in front of this body.
Tammy, if we wanted to, could we request that the site plan come back before us when it's finalized?
If the zoning map change is approved, this, this is the only process in our Land Development Code to have it come in front of this body due to the recent change, well, the water, the water, per the water policy, the water service application, which goes in front of, which is the next step for this application, to go before the Water Issue Subcommittee for the Water, that's the next step. Then both the rezoning and their water service application go to city council together for final consideration.
I thought we got, I thought we took a look at water. When water is being allocated for a particular thing, aren't we supposed to?
And this is the, and this is the application, you don't look at water.
No, we don't look at water, but we look, we look at the site plan.
And this is, and this is the site plan that was submitted.
And this is the site plan that we're going to be looking at?
Yes.
Okay. This question is really for Tammy. They're, they're going to have a water usage review by some other city.
That's the next step. They go to in front of the Water Issue Subcommittee.
And that, and the results of that could change the density of this. Is that correct?
Depending on their water allocation that does the Water Issue Subcommittee recommends. And then as it goes forward for city council, that recommendation will come forward with the rezoning to both be considered at the same time by city council.
Okay. So that mean, that has a bigger bearing on the water usage than anything we decide here. Is that correct?
Correct.
Tom?
Tammy, again, assuming there were children living in these trailers and going to school at the elementary school, who, who would be responsible for putting sidewalks in along Iron Springs Road?
It'll be the applicant, applicants if it's required by the Public Works Department through their engineering. And there is a sidewalk in front of this property currently.
I was there yesterday and I didn't see a sidewalk.
There is a sidewalk in front. I walked on it to post the property. But there's no access driveway, but there is a sidewalk in this area along Iron Springs Road. So that'll have to be maintained in the right of way.
And I beg to differ with you. There's no contiguous sidewalk that I saw.
Can we make stipulations when we rezone something? I believe we can.
Yes, if they're reasonable to the project.
Okay. One of, I'd really like to see something, you know, go into that area. And I really liked the idea of the way the couple that presented the issue. I mean, it sounds to me like a, it could be a really good project and it could be a really bad project if not, if not taken care of. Would it be out of the question to require or request or whatever we do to have a site plan review, once the site plan has been fleshed out, that we rezon it based on a public review, a public meeting that is held by the owners with the neighborhood to review the site plan for things like fencing, corridors, stuff like that, landscaping, those kinds of different things?
So the site plan process that you were reviewing before did not require any public outreach? So the neighbors would never have heard about, if this was a site plan review, they never would have heard about it unless they looked at the agenda? There's no notifications for those. But I guess it is something that possibly they, but there is nothing in the Land Development Code to trigger another review by this body?
Well, I'm not looking for this body to review it. I'm looking for the neighbors to review it.
And there's nothing in our Land Development Code to trigger an additional review by any body or the neighbors?
But we could make that stipulation, though. Whether it's in the code or not, I mean, it's, it's a reasonable stipulation.
And we would not have a way to enforce it?
Jim?
Again, Tammy, would, would there be a site plan review process required in a, in a public meeting if it was rezoned to a multifamily zone?
No. Once the rezoning is approved, per the, within substantial conformance with the site plan, there is no further review by this body unless they came forward with a subdivision plot.
So the action taken today to business general, the site plan, I mean, excuse me, the zone change to business general, we could conceivably see a whole different project in the future on that property as, as long as it's consistent with the zone?
It has, but the recommended stipulation, recommended motion is per, in substantial conformance with the site plan. So as long as they aren't going over the number of units of this in general conformance with the site plan, that, that's approved here, then that would be reviewed by staff.
George, you want to say something?
Mr. Chairman, Commissioner George Worley. I'm the planning manager for the city. We often have projects come through that have multiple steps following them. In this particular case, there are engineering reviews, further reviews by planning staff, reviews by building and fire departments that will all have to occur prior to any approval of permits for construction of a project. Most of the data that we require for those is typically after a project's been rezoned so that the applicant knows that it's worthwhile expending all of those funds. The engineering plans, water calculation plans, and the design plans that the fire department's going to want are all very expensive. So there's going to be a lot of money involved in getting the project to a point where we could issue a permit for it. In many cases, we've had projects come before you for rezoning that, and I believe our recommendation today is the same, that it's in substantial conformance to the site plan that you see. Substantial conformance doesn't mean exact, it just means close. Not more than the number of units, spaces, lots, whatever the site plan's indicating can be shown. And if they substantially change it in order to meet staff requirements, we do have the option at the level of the Community Development Director to send the site plan back to you because there have been substantial changes to it. So that's something to keep in mind. If we go through the rezoning process and you make your recommendation to approve subject to substantial conformance to the attached site plan, and that plan deviates, there's a very high likelihood it's going to be back before you in the future because the plan deviated. I don't know if that helps, but it does give you the option to know that if something changes from what you see today, you'll see it again, most likely.
Mr. Chairman, I got, again, I think there should be a zone change here to be consistent with the general plan, no doubt about it. I have trouble doing a, recommending a zone change that ties a site plan to it that we've just seen. It's a pretty sketchy one. And so I have trouble with that. And I, I don't know how to get around that particular aspect of things. I would like to see the site plan come back to this body if that's the kind of thing we're going to recommend to the council.
Sometimes you can negotiate voluntarily with the applicants if they're willing to do that. Where you may not necessarily have the legal authority to do something, but the applicant, knowing that there is a concern with the Planning and Zoning Commission, may want to voluntarily enter into this concept of having a neighborhood meeting. So that, I suppose, is an option. You'd have to ask them and get them on the record to see if it's something they're willing to do. And I don't know what the rest of the commission wants to do. And just for the folks in the public, the Planning and Zoning Commission is a recommending body to the city council. So this isn't the final decision maker here. The council will be the final decision maker on this, this rezoning application. So right now, what we're looking to do is either move it forward, move it forward with conditions or deny the application. But ultimately, the council is not bound by the decision of this body. They'll make their own, their own decisions.
Would the applicant like to make further comments? You don't have to, but would you?
And, and thank you. I appreciate you letting us know your concerns. Because there are concerns as well, but it also helps us get an idea because we want to be a part of the community and not be, we, we actually, our plan is to live there and own and operate it, is our plan. And then we have a lot of family that are interested in taking over or retired family members, things like that. That's our, that's our current plan. In saying that, next door, there's 26 apartments in the next door area, which I think is about the same size as our property. And those apartments, you know, the usage, traffic, things like that, there's a higher water usage for apartments. They each have their own laundry facilities, et cetera. They can house more people in each apartment. So in saying that, ours is similar to the property. So in, in saying that, ours is similar to the property right next door to us and usage for utilities and traffic and such. And, and I do take the concerns of the neighborhood. I'm, I'm the same, I'm, I'm a stickler. I want peace and quiet. I want people to play nice. I don't want drugs and crime and mischief. You know, I want people to have fun and relax. So especially if us being there, we can police those things. But those will be in our contracts. We plan for a non-smoking area, the whole, the whole property to be non-smoking, no drugs allowed, obviously noise restrictions. I know there's standard city noise restrictions that apply as well, but we'll have our own, you know, generators running, things like that. But each, each site will have its own pedestal and such, so that will eliminate generator noise. We go, we camp, we fish, we hunt. He's hunted his whole life, I have too. We're always out camping, RVing, so we're aware of different things. We like to get out away from people so we can have some peace and quiet or spend time with our families. So our goal with this property is the same, you know, when you have it more people around than, an example would be Lynx Lake Campground. You know, I don't know if any of you have stayed there or visited there before. It's always very clean. There's volunteers, you know, people who are retired, they love to be there and take care of it, clean it up after people leave. Again, with traffic too, our, our check in and out is in the middle of the day, not saying people won't leave early or later, but check in is by, you know, I think three o'clock or two o'clock when we, because that gives us some time to clean the sites, checkout's at 11:00. So people will be coming in and out more in the middle of the day unless they choose to check out early. But they can't check in until the early afternoon. So that takes away from that morning traffic. I take Williamson Valley oftentimes to YMC to get to work, or I take Willow Creek. And we all know the traffic, you know, that's there. Shoot, we grew up here when everything was dirt roads and Prescott Valley was, Robert Road was a dirt road and I played little league out there. So I understand the growth. We fought it for a long time. But we'd liked, our, our goal is to make this a nice place. And even my mother, she's like, well, do you want to name it RV Park because a RV resort sounds nicer? We don't want it to be a trashy RV park. I said, I understand your concern, Mom. We don't, you know, sometimes the name is associated. But with the last several years, many people have gone into camping and RVing and living in their trailer or fifth wheel or off-grid. And so it's, it's changed and the, the, what do you want to say, the different generations, you know, things like that. So we're looking for something in that way to conform and keep it up and keep it nice and pleasant. We want good reviews. We don't want bad reviews, that there's dogs barking all night, or that it's dirty, or that they didn't have good service. Like, I'm a nurse, you know, we are, we are customer service and I always want to give my patients the best service and make them feel comfortable and welcome and that, he is also in customer service, he has been for 20 years. So we like taking care of people. And that's our, our plan with that. I hope that answers some questions. I took a couple of notes.
Also with, like, the paving? We're not paving over the whole property, right? If we did any paving, it would be when you come in and the, the loop would be paved maybe, but we don't want to change the landscape. We want to make, you know, use rocks and, and good material for the road, you know, dirt, to keep it dirt and that way there's, you know, there's, it's not just being paved over and, like the, like the neighbor next door where the whole parking lot is nothing but pavement, you know? So that's kind of where we're at with, with that. You know, the, the 26 apartments next door, there's way more pavement than we'd ever use on our property. We want to try to keep it as natural as we can, you know, and, and just keep it, you know, as close as we can to what it is now. So.
I know it's hard to see when you look at a, a site plan on a piece of paper, a one-dimensional picture. The listing has several nice pictures aerial with drone and things like that. And you can see the trees there now, those are, they've been there for a very long time. Some of them are very tall. So if you kind of can envision a loop that goes around to the sites, a lot of those trees will remain down the middle. On the right-hand side, as we look at it, there's a sewer easement, there's, all those boulders are so beautiful. The contractor that's helping us, he helped Mark Van Warmer next door. So he's very familiar with those boulders and all those things. We love that there's that wall there to provide more of a natural area for our campers or residents, however you want to say. That goes pretty high. If you've walked the property, that, that area is very high, like, there's, there's a mountain right there. There's a granite mountain. We can move, we're going to move those boulders to help level and make retaining walls. We want to use more natural, maybe privacy fences with wood and iron and things like that. Have a nice gazebo area with a fire pit. I know there's some natural gas, I think, available to us. I know that behind there, that's all school zone. Not too far behind, there's another marble home park. And then off to the side is residential. There's just, we like the little trees and the rocks and we want to keep it that way and put that in. We submitted a quick picture from a RV park in Williams, is one of our favorite places to go camp. We're going there this weekend. And it has the trees and the gazebo, kind of the open area. And again, like I said, the site plan, it looks like everything is super small, but if you were to go and march out an area 30 by 60, it's, it's quite a big area. And I said, we drive trailers, our brother hauls cows and does ranching. We've been driving trailers and boats our whole lives, so we wanted to make it easy because we know that sometimes it can be a struggle and, you know, might hit a tree or back in funny. But also we'll be there to assist people that have trouble. But the space that we have, he's realized, he's like, my goodness, that is a very large. So if we took out and put 30 feet, it would come out quite a ways. And an RV is only nine, nine, nine feet to back in. So you have 20 feet of road, plus you have an angled space, plus you have 30 feet to back your trailer in. And that also gives, like I said, a three-car garage width to put parking, other cars, vehicles. You know, people will be limited, they won't be allowed to have 10 people hanging out at their site. We'll have limitations, you know, for things like that when you're talking about. So I don't know if that helps. But we'll be there to help everyone get in and out safely and make sure things stay. But that's our goal. Like I said, I said the gravel, we don't want to pave everything and make it hot and warm. We want to keep it cool. We want to use the native grasses that are there within the property and the trees. And if we need to plant more to make the, the trees in there. Plus, you have to be careful, some of the stuff when you're driving, plants won't survive on those road areas, obviously, but we'll have little areas for people to sit and, and relax. That's what, we want to be a relaxing area.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you. I think those are the ideas.
Any further questions, applicant?
Jim Kloszuski, I've got three questions.
Yes, sir.
So just now that I understand, you're not going to pave the, or pour concrete for each individual pad that will be natural?
Yes, sir.
Okay. That was not understood earlier, so thank you. Units or slots 1 and 34, how close are they to the road approximately?
1, 2, and 3.
1 and 34?
1 and 34.
So currently, there's the existing sidewalk. And then we space, let me see, this is a three-quarter inch to 20 feet. And this is obviously sized down. I want to say it's at least 20 feet from the sidewalk, not, not counting.
Okay. And my last question, you mentioned something about some maybe privacy fencing or that if you consider some kind of decorative fencing along the road as part of like a buffer or screening device?
Yeah.
Yeah, we'd like to take some of the, the rocks that we have. I don't know if you've, there's on, on 89, when you come in, there's a place that has rocks that are built into like the cage. So we want to try to take some of the rocks that we have there and make a, kind of a wall up front to, for, for privacy or for buffering the noise and stuff like that.
Thank you.
Any other questions? Thank you.
Thank you.
Is someone who would like to make a motion?
Mr. Chairman? I'm in agreement with the other Tom that this, this space should be rezoned. There's no question about that. I think there are issues that need to be addressed and quite frankly, I'm of the mind that I, staff has heard this, staff knows this, they know what's going on. And I trust the staff to be able to follow through with this and help make good decisions all the way along. So I'm going to make a motion that we approve, approval for REZ 24-001.
We have a motion. Is there a second to the motion? I second it. James Whiting.
May I just ask, is that subject to the site plan presented? Or is it a straight-out rezoning?
No. Straight-out rezoning.
Question. If we do a straight-out rezoning, something else could go in there that's not on the site plan. So you could have a commercial building going in there instead of the RV park.
No, Mr. Chairman, the way I understand the discussion, that's absolutely correct. I mean, even if we stipulate some kind of different site plan, it's going to be a change of zone and those, whatever permitted in that zone can be moved forward.
If you approve this request here, if I'm, if I'm correct here, it is based upon the site plan permitted, that is what will go in there?
If it's stipulated, the general compliance, if the way the stipulation is worded right now, there's no site plan attached to it. So any use allowed in business general would be allowed in this zone, by this property.
So. Mr. Chairman, I, I don't like it. I mean, I honestly, I mean, I don't, I don't like having be tied a conceptual site plan to a zone change. And then there's no rigorous review of the site plan. I don't like that. But at the same time, this is a request for a zone change that makes a sense from the general, general plan standpoint. So I'm hoping that the staff or in the council will somehow follow this, follow this project very closely and, and do a better job with the site planning. That's all I can say.
And Mr. Chairman, I don't know if at this point it's appropriate, but there's been no second to the motion. What was there? Okay, I take it all back? Debate all you want.
If the motion was made based upon the site plan presented, then that site plan would be the only thing that could go in there right now.
Yes, any use, as long as it's in general conformance with that site plan for an RV park. But right now, with the motion on the floor, is a rezoning with no site plan attached.
Does everybody understand that part?
For the, for the attorney's request, there, there are actually, this site plan can be bound to the zone change.
Yes, you can, you can rezone subject to the site plan that's presented, which I believe is what they're asking for.
Well, that, that was the request, but the, this motion made was a rezoning with, at this time, your motion on the floor is a rezoning with no site plan attached, so it's just hard zone it to business general and any uses allowed per the land development code in business general and uses underneath that, you know, multifamily, single family, all that would be allowed on the zoning, on this property.
I have a, I'm sorry.
I was going to say, if, if it's, if it moves this thing forward and the commissioners like the idea of tying it to the site plan, I'd be willing to amend my motion.
And is there a second?
Would the person who seconded it be agreeable to that amendment to the motion? That rezoning would be based upon the site plan submitted? So in other words, that is the only occupancy that can go in here initially. That goes to my, to a question that I had, okay? The question is, is if we go ahead and rezone this and we say that we tie it to this and for some reason, whether through financing or whatever happens between now and whenever this would take place, would that mean that the zoning would then revert back to single family?
No, it'd stay tied to the site plan. So if someone else say that something happened and they can't move forward with this project and someone else purchased the property, we would say, we would let them know that the rezoning was tied to this site plan, but if you want to do anything else, it has come back through this process.
Okay, but it will still remain then business general?
Yes, but if it's tied to the site plan, any for two years, it would have to be tied.
Would you want to have your second reflect the change in the original motion? Yes, I would be willing to do that because I think that it doesn't change the zoning at some, I mean, in the future, again, okay. Any other discussion? Mary Kay, what we usually do is call, roll, and have each one vote. And I'm asked.
Okay. Commissioner Davis?
Did you say Davis? Sorry. Yes. I, I move approve.
Commissioner Graham?
Approve.
Commissioner Hutchison?
I approve.
Commissioner Kloszuski?
Disapprove.
Commissioner Riley?
Approve.
Commissioner Whiting?
Approve.
Commissioner Michaelman?
Approve. For the record, the party that didn't approve, would you like to state why for the record?
I just think there's too many unknowns right now in terms of water use, transient concerns, issues that not, might not be controllable by the party that's building this in terms of what happens on the property. And I still would like to see something else done on that property that might provide some affordable housing type of project.
Okay.
Pass the 6-0.
6-1.
6-1.
Next item on the agenda is PLN 23-004, a preliminary plat of Senator Cottage's, a 37-unit subdivision on approximately 11-acre parcel. Location generally located off of Senator Highway on the old drive-in property. Zoning is SF9, single family. Property owner, RCJ Irrevocable Trust, applicant, Lion Engineering. Tammy?
Thank you, Chairman. Members of the commission, Tammy Dewick, T.D., Planner. So this is a preliminary plat for Senator Cottage's, creating 37 single-family individual units on approximately 11 acres. And it'd be plotted as a planned area development, and planned area developments allow you to reduce the setbacks, reduce the lot size requirements, and they have to provide open space with this PAD plat, has over 50% open space as part of the site plan. So the subject property is located off of Senator Highway, is the old Senator Drive-In property. The sign is still there and our understanding is that it will remain. It is historical and there is a group that actually maintains that sign and puts the messages on it. And our understanding is that will possibly carry over, but it's not part of this request. I just wanted to throw that out there. It is zone, single family. And so the density allowed is, this plat does not exceed the density allowed. They could do as a planned area development, which reduces infrastructure costs and makes it, there is a lot of open space, which as we heard yesterday at our general plan committee, this is very much supported for these type of developments within the city to maintain open space. The subject property is currently vacant. There have been some, not improvements, but it has been used for other uses with, with engineering permits and such. So the, as you can see on this imagery, the property is kind of already set up for this configuration that you see before you on the preliminary plat. And then the rest of the surrounding areas will remain as open space and, and maintain their character. So before, this is the proposed preliminary plats. They will have to go forward for water, but this is nowhere near the airport. And this is not brought before, because of the water policy, but they do have to go through a water allocation process separately through water issue subcommittee and then the preliminary plat and the water service application move forward together. So here's the, that shows the dimensions. We do have, they are individual detached, the single-family residences. On the right there, you see what the proposed setbacks would be, which are very typical for these size lots. On the left-hand side, and I wish I had a mouse or something, that you're going to see there's a, there's a emergency access to Hazely. When Hazely to the, the left there, when it was plotted, that did provide for emergency or access, or potential access to this property. We did hear concerns from the neighborhood out there that even though it was plotted and developed to connect to this property to allow it, there is concerns from the neighbors about the additional traffic. So that's going to be an emergency access only over to Hazely to meet fire, and it meets the fire code requirements. And then the main access will be off of Senator Highway. So it does have a secondary access to get. So it does have a secondary access to get out, or to allow those residents to get out this way, which is something that our council has been concerned about with some of these plats, so this does allow for emergency access. Issues for consideration with the preliminary plat, this did go through a full review with all our reviewing agencies, and they addressed all the, any concerns that we had, and it was ready to move forward for your consideration for a preliminary plat. Like I said, they will have to go in front of the Water Issues Subcommittee next, that's the next step for water, and then both the preliminary plat and the Water Service Application go to City Council together. And that concludes my presentation, and I'm free to answer any questions that you may have.
Any questions for Tammy?
Tammy, this is property just adjacent to the church that's already there?
Correct.
Tammy, help me understand, really what we're doing is rezoning this from SF9 to PED?
No, we're not rezoning, plenary developments are allowed in the Land Development Code with plats, but it's not a rezoning.
Other questions? Tammy, do we, you have a lot of houses close together here, how's guest parking going to be addressed on this?
They do have a front setback of 20 feet in front of the garage, so that allows for two vehicles to park there. They have to have parking for at least two vehicles, there is no guest parking, you know, but on the plat, but we have found that there hasn't been issues with these type of developments.
Do we know if it's going to be owner-occupied or rental?
They're going to be plotted for individually-owned, single-family residences, but if someone wanted to rent it out, they can, you know, if you want to buy it and rent it out, you're welcome to, or the developer, if he didn't want to sell one, he can rent it out, I mean, but these are plotted for individual ownership, being plotted, and they're detached, single-family houses, they're not attached.
The entrance to Senator Highway there, I live near there and I go by this a lot, is not conducive to having good visibility to get out of there?
And they will have to address that with their engineering plans when this moves forward, if this moves forward.
How would they address that? I put a mirror up there, because your main concern is coming from the south on Senator, you've got a curve there, and drivers on Senator Highway sometimes view speed limits as a suggestion, not as a law?
No. The engineer's here, and I'm sure he can help address that question, above my pay grade today.
Would the applicant like to make a comment on this?
Scott Lyon, Lyon Engineering, engineer for the project. Site visibility...
Address?
Sorry, 1650 Willow Creek Road.
Thank you.
Site visibility, two obstructions that are the main issue for site visibility for right turns, or people turning left out of the development for the northbound traffic, would be vegetation that could be trimmed back, which is in the existing right-of-way, and the existing sign. So those are two options. The sign looks like it's out of the way from doing a site visit, but until we actually get the layout somewhat finalized like we have now, we can then make a hard determination. But as of right now, there is site visibility based on the 25 mile per hour speed limit.
On 25, not 35 and 40?
Unfortunately, it's signed for 25, so that's...
Tom?
Yeah, if I'm looking at your plans correctly, it appears as though there's a Dcel and an Acel lane kind of coming out of that, is that correct?
There'll be a center turn lane with through lanes, the right, there is not a right turn lane into the development, but there will be left turn lanes for both developments, the one to the, the existing development to the west, and for this proposed development here to the east.
Okay, but you'll be widening Senator Highway at the entrance?
That is correct.
Okay, so what that's going to do is, that's going to not only allow people to slow down, but, and speed up, but it's going to allow a little bit better site visibility as you're pulling out of the place, and I can show you what that is right here.
Correct. It'll be widened to the east only, we're kind of stuck to the west side with existing development.
Thank you.
Other questions for the applicant? Sir, did you want to make a comment too?
Yes, Sterling Johnson with the developer, just wanted to say thank you to the city, to staff, and Mr. Lyon for all of the work so far today, very much appreciate the commission's time this morning and your consideration, thank you.
Okay, thank you. Any further questions of applicant or the staff? Someone want to make a motion concerning this item?
Mr. Chairman?
Tom?
Tom Riley, I move to recommend approval of PLN 23-004, preliminary plat of Senator Cottage's.
We have a motion?
Tom Davis will second.
Does someone want to second it?
The Toms have it.
We have a motion and a second, any further discussion? If no further discussion, would you please call the roll?
Commissioner Davis?
Yes.
Commissioner Graham?
Approve.
Commissioner Hutchison?
Approve.
Commissioner Kloszuski?
Approve.
Commissioner Riley?
Approve.
Commissioner Whiting?
Approve.
Commissioner Michaelman?
Approve.
Pass is 7-0.
Are there any updates?
No, we do not. Well, actually, if you guys are in downtown today, from 4 to 6, we have the open house for the old City Hall redevelopment, so if you want, or are interested in to see what the proposal is going to look like and everything, and see the site, you're welcome to come by between hours of 4 to 6 today.
And that's at the old City Hall?
At the other City Hall, yes, the old one.
Meeting is adjourned.